All right, we'll call this meeting to order for the November 12th, 2024, Apple Valley City Council Meeting. For members of the audience who would like to speak, when your name is called, please approach the podium to address the council. And the first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask all to rise and join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, to its justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with the very duty of justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda, and Tom, I see we have at least one update here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just one simple revision tonight, we just have an updated personnel report, and that one was on your consent agenda.
All right, so with those changes, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goodwin, and a second by Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda carries. The next item is our audience participation portion of the meeting. This is for items not on the agenda. Did not see anyone sign up. Would anyone like to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close this portion, move on to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or a citizen requests to pull an item. Councilmembers, are there any items you'd like to pull? All right, citizens, any items to pull? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve consent?
No move.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Melander, second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the consent items pass unanimously, we'll move on to the regular agenda, starting with 5A, and our city clerk is going to walk us through canvassing the November 5th, 2024 general election results.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am excited to be here tonight, a week after the election, to be canvassing the election results. A little background on our turnout on Election Day and before with all the early voting. In Apple Valley, we had 36,633 registered voters. We had an additional 2,536 register on Election Day. In total, we had 32,486 voters, which is an 83% turnout, and you can see that compares generally the same as what we've had in previous presidential election years. 2020 was 87%, 16 was 83 as well, and 2012 was 84%. Of those voters that came out and voted, 50% cast their ballots in their polling places on Election Day. 18% voted in person early here at City Hall. 20% voted in person early at our county service centers, and 12% voted early by mail. Now, for our City Councilmember election results, candidates Ruth Grendel and Lisa Hebert received the top, were the top two vote receivers for our election, and so they are elected to the position of City Councilmember for four-year terms. John H. Retzickel came in third, and Pat Benner was fourth, and then our write-in candidates had, candidates had 272. You will remember the City Council passed a resolution that did not require us to tally all of the write-in votes unless the write-ins reached the threshold of the number of votes that a candidate has received. So we don't have a spreadsheet with Donald Duck and Mickey Mouse on it for you today, and it made our tallying a little bit easier on Election Night. So with that, unless the council has any questions, our requested action is to approve the resolution canvassing the returns of the November 5th, 2024 election, and declaring Ruth Grendel and Lisa Hebert of councilmembers for four-year terms each commencing January 6th, 2025. And before you do that or ask any questions, I also just want to say thank you to all of our election judges, our election staff. My staff worked 12 hours, or 12 days straight without a day off, being here every day to make sure voting was occurring, that everything was ready to go on Election Day. We had fabulous election judges in all of our precincts. I heard nothing but good things from our voters and from our other judges, who said we have such a great team here, and I want to thank the City Council as well. We have a very supportive council who helps provide us the resources and the things that we need to run elections well here in Apple Valley. So thank you very much for all that you do in supporting us as well.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you. So we have a, do we have any questions? Let's start there. John, go ahead.
I don't have any questions. Goodwin's going to say, we just want to talk, but he's leaving, so. I would say the same that you said about the staff, about the election judges, and the people in general in the city of Apple Valley getting out to vote. Congratulations to Councilmember Grendel, and to the newly-elected Lisa Hebert. Congratulations to them, but thanks to everybody that participated in this. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do you want to put, do you mind backing up a slide so we have the motion back ahead of us here?
So moved.
There we go. So a motion from Councilmember Melander to canvass the November 5th, 2024 general election results. Do we have a?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Goodwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congrats to Lisa and Ruth, and thank you to all our judges as well. I'm sorry, we have something from staff.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment. Christina was very gracious in thanking all the other people that worked on the election, but I want to make a special note to thank her as well. This was her first Apple Valley election. It went extremely well. We obviously have a very talented city clerk, and the transition between Pam Gexter, who was still here to assist through this process, and with Christina picking up and just taking it off, and really did an amazing job. So just want to make sure that that's on the record as well. She did a great job.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item 5B, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing submittal of a comprehensive plan amendment. And Tim Benetti.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight is a request for a comp plan amendment for what is tentatively referred to as Orchard Place Apartments. This is for tonight, you're asked to consider a resolution authorizing a submittal, and again, just a submittal to the Met Council of a requested comp plan amendment from C Commercial to HD High Density Residential, 12-plus unit acre. This is requested by Trident Development along with HJ Development as showing developers along with Rockport LLC as the landowners. Hopefully, most of you are aware of this site. This is at the northwest corner of current English Avenue, 157, just to the west of Texas Roadhouse, Punch Pizza, Mr. Carwash, and our holding ponds in north of Quarry Point Park. Not all of Outlet D of Orchard Place 2nd is being considered, just the, basically the south on 3rd, 5.62 acres, as noted in this image on your screen. Currently, the 2040 comp plan has the existing site as C Commercial, noted in the black outline, and the proposed HD High Density Residential just for that area of Outlet D. It's currently zoned retail business RB, highlighted here also on the screen as well. Part of the land use is, it's a two-step process here on the land use and zoning. Land use first, and then zoning to follow, which would likely be a multiple-family if approved. For tonight, just for illustrative purposes only, we want to show you what the developer has presented to the Planning Commission and to staff. This is a tentative proposed site plan for a four-story, 128-unit. None of your consideration tonight is to address this. This will come later on the entitlement process for the rezoning, the site building plan review, the plating, which will come later if you so choose to move this way and use amendment forward. So this is just a simple layout showing a proposed building, parking on the east or in the front, also some trail connectors, landscaping to the pond, and also the entertainment space on the north side. Again, exterior building plans, just for illustrative purposes only. This is not in a consideration, and just for clarification, any approval you make tonight does not give any implied or tacit approval to this design or the site plan layout. So just want to clarify that or make that very clear. We also have some issues or discussions that were brought up as part of our review from staff and also from some of our residents who participated in the public hearing process. Some of those were conditions changing that impact the land use vision for this area. Is multifamily residential appropriate use? Will multiple, will multiple-family residents be impacted by the nearby commercial development, including some of those auto-oriented uses that you were seeing today? And how can those conflicts be mitigated? Good questions, and we started off a public hearing. I'm going to go through these very quickly, but will the change to HD negatively impact the commercial area to the east or north? We brought examples where you could see apartments right up next to commercial development, especially around downtown, Parkshead Gabella, Picos de Vela, Remington Cove. So we think thoughtful design can help mitigate those potential negative impacts. We have multiple-family housing coexisting peacefully with minimal complaints received by the city. So we feel that, yes, we can do that. The approved commercial, current vision of the site is commercial. That's based upon our 2040 plan, which some of you are probably very instrumental in adopting just a few years ago, back in July 2020. However, the comp plan is not absolute. Most of you know this. It can be changed per the direction and discretion of its leaders, hence you and the Planning Commission members, also with careful input from residents and businesses. These areas can be changed due unforeseen for, unforeseen economic forces such as real estate market, demand for certain uses, such as housing. Under our land use plan, we have a number of goals that can lend some, some support to this request, that the high density is primarily oriented in around the downtown and along high-frequency transit corridors. We have high-frequency transit corridors with County Route 42, a pilot knob, and other road uses around here. The city will look for opportunities to mix residential, commercial land uses when appropriate. This is ideal for mixing high-density to our commercial, retail uses in this area. Projects designed to integrate residential within commercial uses and cohesive site plan is building. Right now, that remains to be seen, but we feel like they're, they've begun the initial steps of showing that. The city will use suburban-intensive transit-oriented development to increase appropriate housing opportunities. Here again, you're encouraging higher density along those employment-based land uses that are located within the Sierra Avenue Transitway and the County Road 42 Transitway. That does meet this requirement or opportunity here. The city will plan for orderly, compact mix of residential, commercial, employment uses. Again, we feel that this is also being met. We're going to work with Met Council, CDA, and others to provide fair share of affordable housing. Now, this project is not identified as an affordable housing yet. The developer has indicated this will be a market-rate type housing, so, but it can still be considered affordable, probably for some, yes. Can the comp plan and other identified resource to address housing needs? Yes. Encourage supply of choices? Yes. We promote residential development, includes amenities such as ponds, parks, vegetation. As you saw, we have that pond nearby that was created as an amenity for this area. We feel they can take advantage of that, also with their new landscaping. We support high-density housing along transit corridors. When it's convenient to access transportation, we have a transit station just to the south here, next to the park. We feel that that opportunity exists here as well. Even with limited land value, limited land, Apple Valley can accommodate housing growth through infill redevelopment. Under minimum density assumptions, this is a statement under the housing, Apple Valley can accommodate nearly 40% of its forecasted housing growth within the Orchard Place in this area. 40% seems a lot, and it is a lot, but this was identified as, now, it doesn't mean you have to provide all of it in Orchard Place, but this is what was identified in our comp plan, that 40% of that area would be designated for housing. So changing from a commercial to high-density makes, may appear extreme, however, it's a change in high-density use, not overly consistent or conflict with the general goals and objectives. It can be an acceptable change of use or change of land use. What is the current vacancy rate? This is very interesting. The overall retail market has softened, however, high-density residential neighborhoods benefit from proximity to commercial goods and services. So you kind of get that symbiotic relationship if you want high-density near your commercial retail businesses. This is ideal for that area as well. The revised master plan shows that the proposed development maintains a high quality and vibrancy that was envisioned. Of rates of less than 5% is typically considered healthy in any housing market. As we indicated to the Planning Commission back in March of 2024, we have the advantage of being privy to a market advisors report that shows Apple Valley was low at 2.9%. We just found out today that at the end of September 24, it's now down to 2%. When you get 5% or less, that's very healthy. 2% is extremely healthy. Healthy meaning that there's a need for housing of this nature. That's just what that response is. Orchard Place is a prime location for commercial, maybe needs more time developed. Again, you're aware that this was a location for commercial. The plan was to establish a hardy mix of commercial, industrial, medical office uses, residential, both low, medium, high. Several commercial sites have panned out very successfully, Texas Roadhouse, Orchard Place Strip Centers, Mr. Carwash, Lenz and Barley's, Chase Bank Chafin, and whatever, Health Partners. All of those have been very successful, however, there might be a need to provide for added proximity of residents to fuel those customer bases, but also employment bases. The retail, commercial development in metro area can be a bit cyclical, not predicted. The need for housing does seem to be in high demand, as the percentage we just went over does show, and it's also a continually sought-after development in our suburban areas such as Apple Valley. Also, our city engineers have confirmed that the site is adequately served with utilities and streets. There's no significant changes needed for the city services. Again, the community context, national retail trends show that the retail bubble requires monitoring, so that is a constant lookout by the developers, and they can address that either further. Housing affordability, again, we have these numbers allocated in our current comp plan. I believe we are still on track to meet those unit number counts on that blue table to the left. To the right is what they considered area median income of 123,700. Again, this is not really necessarily an affordable housing project or proposed, but not to say that it can provide for some affordable opportunities for others. Light pollution was brought up. We have certain levels of requirement. We're going to, we're going to make sure we review that at time of building permit, or excuse me, site plan permit. Any impacts to schools? ISD 196 had no concerns. I would think that this will be an opportunity for them to gain a few students with families moving into this area. The property is designated HD Development. Is there, is there a concern that this proposed would compete with other developments? We felt it would not. The four-story, four-story building will be an ISO. Again, these are comments from the public. Orchard Place Townhome is a three-story. The appearance of a four-story may appear a little bit bulking in nature across the pond, but we feel that when it's separated by the pond, near the commercial uses, there should be very minimal, very minimal impacts to the other uses around there. The sidewalks around ponds near my house will have more traffic. We hope so, because that's what we want. We want people to use those sidewalks. We want people to use those trails. So yes, we would love to see that, and it's the reason why we install them. So we don't feel that that's necessarily a negative or takeaway. This was a comment that, again, just was raised about increasing crime or quote-unquote riffraff on the trails. I talked to our police department. We don't see a lot of crime or criminal activity in our trail systems. These trails are going to be very wide-open, very accessible, and very visible. So we don't feel that that is, is really to be addressed at this point. We don't believe that that's a fair statement. Concerns about the number of apartment developments having constructed. Very true, but mostly apartments that we have built have been very successful, and there's still a demand or need for them. Concerned that reguining will result in job losses. Again, the area is continually zoned and guided for retail, commercial, office uses. We don't think that's going to be taken away very much by this 5.62 acres of housing. Where are the apartments planned? There are others that will be planned in the other areas that are currently guided, but right now those areas are kind of in hold, a holding pattern, because they're still currently being mined by the Rockport AVR group. Wrapping up, apartments will result in increased traffic overcrowding. This is a misnomer that I've had many, over the course of my career as a planner, and talk with traffic engineers, and even our own city engineers, that there's a perception that a multifamily housing project brings a lot more traffic to an area than a retail. It's, it's completely opposite. The daily trips in and out are less over a course of a day than they are by retail commercial use. So there shouldn't be any problems with traffic. The roads are guided, are built to incorporate that heavy level of traffic in and around this area, so we feel that that's not necessary. The original plan, again, was to provide for a nice walking trail system. Some of you were part of that recent North Creek Greenway Trail grand opening, ribbon cutting, a beautiful trail system. We want to encourage these people around here to use it, not only in the west side, but also this area as well, and also this entertainment or this trailhead feature near the focal point. Again, this was being partially paid for by the developer from HJ Development, so we feel that this is a really nice amenity to be added to this pond area. So with that, on August 21st, our Planning Commission did review this on their public hearing. Most of those comments that you just, we went over, were brought up by residents and were hopefully addressed and answered appropriately for the, for the commission. A PC did provide follow-up consideration on the September 18th, and did recommend approval based on a 5-1 vote of this request. Tonight, we're asking for adoption of a resolution. Again, authorizing justice submittal to Met Council for that comp plan amendment from C Commercial to HD High Density Residential, and only for that portion of Outlet D Orchard Place 2nd noted here. Once we get this back from Met Council, you'll have a chance to basically take another crack at it, to either approve or deny the land use amendment request. If, if it is approved later on, that signals the developer to come in and start their full entitlement process for the rezoning, the plating, and anything else they need for the site. With that, I'll stand for your questions, or the developers are here to answer it as well.
Thanks, Tim. Start with councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Goodwin.
Just a comment, and we were looking at the drawings here of what may or may not be proposed, but, and I'm sure the developers know that, because there is residential to the west and the southwest. If you have a nice-looking building, it's going to be fine. I know that I've seen some areas where I wouldn't want to be a couple blocks away from an apartment building that looks terrible, but you got the pond there, and, well, right directly west is a townhouse, which is really very, that's, that's high-density too. So that's all I'm saying, and I'm sure you're going to make sure, and I'm sure the developers can make sure, it's just going to be a nice-looking building, and that's all we're looking for.
I'd rather have that there than commercial.
Councilmember Melander.
The fact that the retail is already there, and it's obvious more retail is going to come. If folks are renting these apartments, they know by definition, starting coming out of the Shargate, that that stuff is there. Some of them may even be there because of that. So that can't be a negative. It's like folks near the airport complaining about airport noise, you know, the airport was there first, so. I know the market changes. I've been in commercial real estate for 40 years, so you can't always tell which direction it's going, but you can't stop water from going downhill, and you can't stop the market from telling you what, what needs to be built. I'm personal prejudiced, for lack of a better word, you just see apartments popping up all over the place, and I know there's a demand for it, and I, I know we have some housing requirements from the Met Council. I would sure like to see something different, but it doesn't seem like the market's ready for that now, and it's not reasonable to hamstring the owners of the property from selling their property, because we're not in favor of, you know, where the market says people need to go, so. Nice-looking project, I'm sure the developer is going to pay a lot of attention. I know they've got it passed through the gauntlet of Planning Commission. Those devils can be tough, I know this, so.
Don't we?
I'm sure we'll come up with something nice when it, when it gets to us, thanks.
Yep, we will. Councilmember Bergman.
Thanks, Mayor. The Met Council request is pretty simple. It goes to Met Council, they either say yea or nay, and it comes back to us, and we reevaluate it again, as what you were stating.
Correct.
When we look at this project, I think it's kind of unique, different, interesting in that area. I get that when I look at commercial, I guess I'd ask the question, take it one step farther from me, how much of this project, and I do like the project, I'm just asking a question. We take this away from commercial, how much is left in that area that can still stay commercial, or can something later instead of apartments have some other townhomes, condos, whatever you want to put in that area? I do like the project, I think it's unique. I'm surprised at the questions that are written here.
They aren't here, they're not.
Right, right, but the questions that we got are people asking, and I'm like, wait a minute.
Yeah.
You live there already.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so it's a great question. So if you look up on this, this image here, you'll, you'll note that we still have enough areas guided for this area for commercial. We also have the MBC, which is basically the gravel-mining pit area to the north there.
Right.
That is intended to be a mixer of commercial, retail, and light industrial uses. We also have other housing opportunities. You, you may note that the area north of the Polty Homes Development, sorry, I can't use my mouse here, but where the current AVR McNamara Mining, their maintenance building, their boneyard, that's guided for HD. There's also another part that's not shown on this map that's guided for single-family. There's going to be limited housing opportunities here, but the commercial base, we want to keep and maintain that. And ironically, I, I wanted to make sure we announce this tonight. This is good news, because I think, hopefully, you're going to be excited about this as we are. HJ Development indicated that they had locked up or have a purchase agreement for the north seven acres of the site, highlighted in the green. Below in blue is the OP Apartments, Orchard Place Apartments by Trident. To the north is a Skyline Social and Games. They've given our permission to share that name with them. We did meet with them last Friday. This would be a new indoor/outdoor rec, commercial recreational use. So you can imagine the impact that this, with all these 128-plus unit residents could have, just walking right over to a very, very fun place for both indoor and outdoor activities. Also, in the center area there, not meted out yet, is a proposed restaurant, or possibly brew pub, that Chris Mo, excuse me, Mr. Mo from HJ Development is working on. He can, he can address your, any questions or comments on that as well. But you can see how this could really provide for a nice, impactful opportunity for this area. I'm not trying to oversell it here, but this is just an opportunity for, to bring those residents right to this area and help with the other uses around here. So, Councilmember Bergman, we're not going to lose any, the minimal impact and the loss of commercial retail will be nominal.
I think everybody said everything I could say, right? I don't know, I don't know else to add to that. We need to react to the market as it changes and adjusts. Seven, eight years ago, we would have said this is going to be a large corporate office campus, and we know there's no market for that right now, and, boy, had we built that seven or eight years ago, we might actually be regretting some of that decision, right? So maybe a little slowness is, a little slowdown is okay. This will be good for the rest of that development. Retail benefits from rooftops and vice versa, so. And I like what we're doing as a, as we look at this development, right? We're looking at developing, we've talked a long time about this needs to be developed, not in onesie-twosie pieces, but with a vision for the whole area, and we're starting to get to that with this, so.
get to that with this, so. I like where we're going. It's a different than what we originally thought, but so are lots of things, so. If there are no other questions, we would be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the submittal of the comprehensive plan amendment to the Metropolitan Council, redesignating a portion of Outlet D or Orchard Place Second from Commercial to HD, twelve-plus units an acre for Orchard Place Apartments located in the northwest corner of one-hundred-and-fifty-seventh Street and English Avenue.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Goodwin, a second from Councilmember Malander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That item carries. I do want to, our developers have any questions, comments for the council, or you guys good?
We're good. Unless you have anything you'd like us to share.
I, I think we're good. I just wanted to give you that opportunity. You, you took the time to be here and sit through it, so I didn't want to cut off that shot if you had it, so. Thank you, guys. Appreciate working with staff.
I just, I would add that Trident has been before, the council before, with our Remington Cove projects, and you understand the importance of exterior elements and design, so we look forward to bringing a good project back to.
Thank you, guys. You bet. Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right, that'll bring us to staff and council communications. And Tom, anything from staff this site, this evening? Council members? Anything? Nothing? All right. We will move on with our calendar of upcoming events. Our next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, November sixth, November sixth. How about November twenty-sixth at seven PM? Our holiday tree lighting will happen just before that at six fifteen PM, prior to that council meeting, so come out and enjoy our kickoff to the holiday season, although it still seems like fall outside right now, so. As usual, we'll have, I think, we're here tonight, we'll have the choir back, we'll have the band back, we'll have cookies, hot cider. We'll light a tree, assuming the squirrels haven't eaten all the wiring off the ground by between now and then, and we'll have a fun night, so. Do we have a motion to approve the calendar?
So move.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Bergman, a second from Councilmember Goodwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. Our final item is to convene in closed session under the labor negotiations, exception to the open meeting law, to discuss ASME and LES union negotiations. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So move.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Bergman, second from Councilmember Goodwin. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We'll reconvene across the hall in just a couple minutes.